That is, okay, at being 5:30, I will call the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 16th to order. Can we have a roll call, Chris?
Absolutely. Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Fraker.
Here.
Mr. Geller.
Here.
Mr. Lees. Ms. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Gara.
Here.
And Ms. Gort.
Here.
All right, are there any changes to the minutes?
There are no changes tonight.
Okay, or to the agenda?
Er.
Sorry.
I said minutes and you went agenda.
I went right to the agenda, apologize for that.
Any changes to the minutes, Commissioners?
No.
Then we will accept them as is. And Chris, any changes to the agenda?
They are done.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open the meeting to a public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself. Do we have any comments?
Online.
All righty. All right, then we will close that section. Any call-ups or changes to the consent calendar? Oh, okay. Then we will move right into our work session, and I think that's Cliff.
Preliminary hearing.
Preliminary hearing, all righty.
Sir. So for the record, my name is Cliff Cross, Planning Planner Two. Before you this evening, I have the Village at Breckenridge Master Sign Plan. This is an amendment to an original Master Sign Plan as well as some requested variances. So to dive right in, we do have the applicant, Elena from North Design, as well as Nathan representing the village here with us this evening. So like I said, this is a proposal to amend the existing Master Sign Plan. This is going to take in kind of a new formatted document, as you've seen in the packet. Included in this are a few additional signs for specific tenants, as well as a few other changes. On top of all of those minor amendments, there are some requested variances. Two of them have been previously approved and two are newly requested. So let me dive in here. Oh wait, no, I don't need that. Just sharing my screen. All righty. All right. So to begin, I do want to identify that the Village at Breckenridge is a collection of multiple mixed-use buildings, including residential, commercial, some other services, as well as a medical center. If you look on the screen, these are going to be a collection of the Siavano. Peak Nine in the Wetterhorn, Antero, as well as one other building, the Chateau further west. And then the Maggie, as well as Ten Mile Room, which is just above up here on the mount, and Gravity House are not part of this Master Sign Plan. They do, you know, fit into the built environment of the development, but they are not subject to this Master Sign Plan. So as you can see somewhat on this map, there is a large pedestrian easement cutting through the middle of the village. This is utilized to access the Peak Nine Base area, as well as kind of an open-air plaza for the commercial development itself. In this area, there is also a easement on the northern side up by the Chateau Building. And then the two primary accesses for this development, it's going to be the vehicular one off of South Park Avenue. And then kind of a secondary here over by Main Street Station over the Blue River. As I've kind of specified, this is an amendment to an existing Master Sign Plan, so this is going to be building upon the Master Sign Plan that is already approved with those additional things that we'll discuss tonight. I do want to clarify that tonight, we're only focusing on some of the more controversial issues that were also mentioned in the staff report. But if you do have any questions specifically about additional tenant sign or nothing mentioned in the staff report, you may as well ask that. So Policy 12 is our absolute sign policy. It more or less points directly to Title IX, Chapter 15, which is our signs on private property. Within that, signs are calculated off of building frontage. And previously, this development had a Master Sign Plan approved that interpreted building frontage a little bit differently, as you've seen in your staff report. The applicant more or less previously requested the Planning Commission to identify or recognize the internal frontages that this development is kind of built out with to calculate into that building frontage. So we have kind of looked at that and readdressed in our sign, Master Sign Plan here. So this is a good example picture of kind of how we're calculating those frontages with that internal plaza, kind of going through the development. This is based off of a previous interpretation, both approved by Planning Commission and the Town Council in 2010. We're really just including this in the staff report as record-keeping, but if you do have any questions about it, we're happy to answer. So one of the main reasons we are here this evening is the variance aspect of this. The applicant is requesting a total of four variances. Two of those have been previously approved. The freestanding signs and then the gateway entrance monument. The two newly requested are going to be sandwich board signs and banner signs. So just to go over the first two previously approved, and then we'll jump into the two newly requested. So with this application, we do need a kind of a reaffirmation of this requested variance. The applicant's proposing the two freestanding signs. Let me hop down here, the two freestanding signs, so the first one is going to be the, sorry, the entrance monument over here from that pedestrian plaza from Main Street Station. And then the second sign is going to be the proposed directory sign on South Park Avenue. Just another point of information, these are conceptual designs. Staff is recommending a condition of approval that a secondary Class D Minor sign permit be submitted to actually approve or review and approve the location and design of these. These are just conceptual to include them in the Master Sign Plan. So generally, staff is supportive of both of these. Specifically, this directory sign on South Park Avenue, there's not something like this that exists. If you have been over to the village and familiar, there are two signs kind of identifying the ski lifts as well as the medical offices. But there are no other directory wayfinding informational signage on this frontage, kind of directing people into the plaza for specific tenants. So staff is very supportive of this. The secondary sign is going to be the archway over the pedestrian access for Main Street Station. Staff is supportive of this as well as there is no identification for the project on this eastern side. As well as considering this as a, you know, heavily trafficked area from Main Street Station over to, you know, specifically the village or even Peak Nine Base Area. This does see a lot of traffic, so staff is supportive of being able to provide some identification on this eastern side. With that, we do just have a question of Commissioners, will you all agree with staff to reaffirm this requested variance? The second variance is still regarding this monument sign. The applicant is proposing this, like I said, for a project identification. But the code specifically does not allow kind of archways, one, but also gateway entrance monuments are usually over the vehicular accesses. So they are requesting a variance from those two items within the gateway entrance monument. The other aspect is height, which can kind of fall both in variance one and variance two. The entrance monument has been approved previously, and it is for the archway that currently exists over on the main vehicular entrance for the village on Park Avenue. Generally, like you said, staff is supportive of this, being able to provide the variance for, one, over a pedestrian access, and then, two, actually including an archway, even though this is a conceptual design. It includes additional wayfinding and directional information, including tenants. So definitely staff recommends supporting this. With that, we do have a question, if you will. Reaffirm this. So the third variance that we'll get into this evening, let me hop down a couple pages, is going to be sandwich board signs. So the applicant is requesting the use of sandwich board signs for all tenant-level plazas. This does include almost all of the plazas kind of included in this area, restaurant, medical. There would also be the variance given for vendor carts and definitely some of the other uses in this area. They have been able to kind of provide some regulations that they have laid out. But as previously discussed, staff has, you know, had a reaffirmation from Town Council again and again on the prohibition of sandwich board signs. As it was discussed in your staff report, primarily in 2014, Town Council was directed a task group to basically look into this problem and provide recommendations on how to relax some of the regulations pertaining to sandwich board signs. After many public comments, a lot of discussions, work sessions, et cetera, both Planning Commission and Town Council decided not to relax those regulations. And then again, more recently, in 2022, we held a work session with the Town Council once again questioning the use of sandwich board signs after hearing quite a bit of feedback from our community. They once again affirmed prohibition on sandwich board signs. Their primary concerns particularly are snow removal, the narrowness and design of our town, ADA compliance and safety, as well as just general sign clutter and proliferation around town. Overall, Town Council decided not to do the code changes, but then made code changes that we've discussed previously in window signs, window wraps, and other directional signs as an alternative that fits a little bit more in tune with our sign code. So staff definitely does understand, you know, the explanations from the applicant. But both Planning Commission and County Council have previously weighed in on this, and that's just the direction that we are going with. We have been able to identify some of our concerns primarily as just the sign proliferation and clutter. They have, you know, provided some of those answers that you can discuss with the applicant later during this session, but I just wanted to hop up here to our Keystone photos. This is a very similar plaza development within Keystone, which is part of unincorporated Summit County as of right now. Just in this photos, which is about a hundred-yard walk, there's just ten sandwich board signs. It's quite a lot of proliferation. Some people have multiple, some, you know, may not exactly front this plaza, but they still put a sandwich board sign in this. More or less, staff just has the concerns about the proliferation and clutter, even with the recommendations that they have laid out for regulations. Overall, staff does find this variance a little unwarranted. Ultimately, they are making the argument that sandwich board signs would help in the internal plaza. But as of right now, staff has identified, you know, some identification problems on the exterior boundary of the property. So considering some of those recommendations from Town Council and Planning Commissions previously, staff is making the recommendation of using further directional signs and other signage as the correct format to stay in tune with our sign code. But still being able to provide some more identification for both the project itself, as well as all of the tenants within. So with that, staff recommends the denial of the requested variance for the use of sandwich board signs. And then we also have a question, if you'll agree with staff. The last variance that we'll discuss this evening is banner signs. So the applicant is requesting the use of banner signs both in let's see, I think I pulled it down. The use of banner signs within the project, this would have multiple different uses. So as you can see, kind of some potential identification for the project, as well as some of our special events and such. The town code specifically specifies prohibition of banner signs as well. So that definitely raises a concern with staff. The applicant has more or less kind of provided these two different aspects of signage, but as we've previously discussed, we can't really look at what that content is. And then on top of the staff's concern with content, our primary concern is the materiality. So a majority of the time, banner signs are made of kind of a vinyl material, which is inconsistent with our sign codes recommend or required materials. So kind of looking at two in compliance sections with the sound sign code, staff does not recommend granting the variance. It will impact kind of the proposed character for all signs within town, as well as just set a wrong precedent for future applications. So staff definitely has another question, if you agree with staff that this requested variance should be denied. With that, I'm sorry, I went really fast. This project doesn't have any points currently, but we do have quite a few questions for the Commission as this is a preliminary hearing. But I'm happy at this point to answer any further questions or clarify any aspects. And then we do have the applicant has a presentation for you as well.
Thank you, Cliff. Many Commissioners have any questions for staff, Ellen?
I think I'm going to hold off on, I think my questions are all for the applicant.
Okay. Elaine?
I have a question about the stairs with the arch over it, if you can pull that picture up. Is that, that arch isn't there currently?
No, ma'am. There currently, if you see this directory sign up here, there's one sign here and then another one over here on the bridge of the river, but there is no other signage over the stairway.
So the base of that is obstructing the sidewalk on the right and narrowing it on the left. Do we know the space on the left side? Is that still wide enough for? I mean, clearly, there's probably some requirement for fire access.
No.
Wheelchair access, I just don't know.
That is something staff can look at. I think right now, these are just conceptual designs. So I do not know the exact distance and that measurements, but in the future application, staff can definitely ensure that they have clearance provided for ADA and other access.
And just for this, I can chime in a little bit about the circulation, but essentially, if we needed increased space to the left there, basically, as soon as you get around the stairs, it goes to the same spot. So there's, you can walk underneath the staircase there, you'd have to go maybe like 10 feet further to go to the same, the same point. So it wouldn't necessarily disrupt, you know, circulation as much, like if there were two independent paths going to different locations, but still there may be a concern overall, if it is really that tight on the right-hand side overall. But I think it's something we'll need to look at and get a better detail of exactly what could be allowed. And then, and also, I guess, we'd have that, as Cliff mentioned, the actual sign design review after the master plan. This would just allow them to put something like that in it, but it's probably a good point to try and figure out if this would really work in that location based on those parameters.
Okay, I just have concerns because I think there's a lot of foot traffic going through there on ski boots and people with little kids and there's, isn't, don't they have the snow where they help the people that are handicapped that used to be down there, so. Accessibility is
Basically, pretty key. To the left, if you go and then wrap around to the right, I think it's like their HR department, but then there's definitely different ski schools, like different age groups, and then the BOEC, kind of further to the left running Maggie Pond over there. And then camps in the summer for younger kids.
That's the only question I have right now.
Cliff, I'd like to revisit the screen where you measured the frontage of the building. And I understand that this is a historic situation, in other words, it's already been reviewed, it's already been approved. Do we know if the same use of doors to establish those frontages still exists? You know, we, last meeting, we talked about the back doors, well, they aren't used as front doors anymore, they're not access doors. And how are we counting those frontages compared to these frontages? Do we know?
We will leave some of that question up for the applicant, but I do walk through the village quite often, even in some of the less pedestrian areas, and a lot of them are. I guess quickly to go around the building, this frontage doesn't have any entrances that are public-facing, but it's still accounted for in that original building frontage definition. The actual plaza itself, kind of where the hatching is, would be seen as a public right-of-way as well. So those are a little bit easier to interpret as frontage. On this backside, there is a kind of emergency access easement for the hospital. So we have accounted for that as well, since there is a road back there. For Antero, these are all commercial spaces all the way around. Wetterhorn also has commercial spaces all the way around. These offices on this backside, I believe, were used frequently as public-facing spaces. But more recently, as some other ski development stuff has happened, I have seen a lot more activity in this building all around. I believe that a lot of the My Epic Gear offices are back here, as well as some other Ville Resorts stuff. For the other buildings, the Chateau, it's that easement. And then for the BOEC and other offices, this has been counted as a building frontage, as they are public-facing, specifically like Elaine has mentioned.
I think my concern in looking that, and the reason I ask that question is it's really a big advantage from counting the area available for signage to count it that way. And kind of want to be fair to the downtown people, like we're being fair to the village people when you're doing this kind of a calculation.
Well, I guess I'll point out for downtown, you have the benefit of counting the frontage on Main Street, but then you're able to actually double your signage basically in the back, if you do have back frontage. And then a lot of the buildings really don't have any windows or fenestration or pedestrian access in between the buildings. So when you look at it from that perspective, where you can walk around the buildings and where you have the frontage, it actually is kind of a I'm not sure if it's completely apples-to-apples, but it's very similar to like what we'd allow. You know, in the case where you have two frontages that really can't be seen from the same point.
I think before, I would make a recommendation that before you lock in renewing and accepting this calculation, somebody maybe ought to just walk around and make sure that those frontages still are frontages.
Yes, sir.
When we were talking about the sandwich boards, I didn't catch this in the report, but I caught it when you were talking, that they would apply to the vendor carts as well?
Yes, sir. So they are asking that each vendor cart would be allowed one sandwich board sign.
And did we just open the door to sandwich board signs for any other vendor cart in town?
There is a concern about precedent here, but no, we have currently not.
Those are my questions, thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Cliff. Very good presentation. I do have a few questions for the applicant on the entrance signs and the messages, but none for you.
Thank you.
I do have a question with respect to the sandwich boards. I'm looking at nine dash fifteen dash thirteen, the last sentence there about how the director may not grant a variance solely because of the the display of a sign would be more profitable or valuable if the variance were granted.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is not really discussed in the report, but it seemed to me that the presentation by VAB, as well as the comments that you circulated. Yeah, there, that's, that's where I'm talking about. All seem to acknowledge that the sandwich board signs are for the purpose of advertising business services. And so what's your view on how that fits into that last sentence?
So there, as you probably saw in some of the public comment that we received, a lot of it was dealing with the financial benefits of such sandwich board signs. And staff is, you know, concerned about that. But that's why we're more or less reverting back to Town Council's, you know, carve-outs that they created in previous years in the forms of window signs, window wraps, and then additional directory signs. So staff's really just making the recommendations to not provide a variance, particularly in this aspect, and solely go alternative paths, still providing identification for all of the tenants, without breaking any more of our kind of town codes, if that makes sense.
Right, yeah, because I'm wondering whether we even have the authority under that language to grant a variance.
I don't know if
It's a good point, Susan. I mean, if we decide, if you decide to recommend against the variance for this, that could be one of the criteria you want to cite.
Right.
You have more questions?
Yep.
And I have no questions for staff.
Just one quick question for staff, I just are there, I meant to look on my way here, but we have no, the town has no banner signs on the light poles on Main Street?
The town uses a lot of banner signs on light poles, but we do specifically have a separate section of code that allows us to do that, but it would kind of be up to the Commission to weigh that information.
Any more questions? Okay, would the applicant like to present?
Thanks, Cliff. Can you hear me? Hello, Elena Scott with Norris Designs. Good to see you all. It's been a minute. I hadn't seen the remodel. It's very nice. Um, apologize for my hat, but this hair is not looking so good. So you are getting a beanie tonight. And isn't all the snow great? Anyway, I'm here to talk about, uh, the master sign plan. And in particular, uh, the Village at Breck and, um, it's, it's opportunities and challenges, um, of the way it's designed. Nineteen eighty-four, um, was the original construction of this. And so it is designed in a, in a pretty unusual way in comparison to the rest of the town and, um, how the commercial frontage works. And so we'll spend quite a bit of time on that and establishing context. Um, and then we're happy to answer any other questions you have about, um, about the master sign plan. Again, it's preliminary. So we're really here to have a good conversation with you about how to tackle the idea of activation in a fifty-five thousand square foot heated plaza surface, um, right here in town. That could, um, really use some more, um, activation and be better utilized. So as Cliff mentioned, we have the five structures here, um, South Park Avenue, um, located north here. Um, you know, we're going to go through a couple of maps, just looking at context, but it is important to point out that none of these, uh, commercial tenants have any roadway frontage. Um, it's all pedestrian access. Our one vehicular access is here off Highway nine. So everything's internally focused. It's almost like we're talking about signage for an interior of a mall. Um, and like an interior signage plan rather than an exterior signage plan. So it's just a little bit different than a lot of the other places in town. Oh, there goes my Kleenexes. All right. Uh, so in context, historic downtown and Main Street, you can see the Village at Breckenridge, historic downtown here. Um, as I mentioned, we don't have any commercial frontage out on the roadway. So it does really change, um, how the space is activated, how the space is, um, accessed. And it, it really changes the, the overall wayfinding and, um, you know, like I said, the place is a little underutilized. Um, on Main Street itself, you can see, you know, the use of banners. And then, you know, the tenants have, you know, when you talk about the differences, there are a lot of advantages to being on Main Street while the sidewalk is narrow. You have a lot of foot traffic. You have a lot of window traffic. If you just drive down the street at night, looking into the windows and seeing, you know, the shops just because of the amount of people, the traffic on Main Street, it's a very, very different environment. And so we do think that the comparison to Main Street businesses, um, is quite different than the experience of a commercial tenant within the Village at Breckenridge because of that kind of insulated experience that we have without visibility um, out onto Main Street or to, um, South Park Avenue. A second comparison we did want to make is our lack of what I will call beachfront. Um, because we don't have the Highway nine frontage, um, you know, it's something I pointed out. We also don't have the ski area frontage. Uh, the Maggie is a separate building from the Village at Breckenridge. That really is kind of that beachfront zone for Peak Nine. When you think about Peak Eight, the amount of traffic coming through there in a pedestrian environment, but all of those frontages right onto on the ski area, it is a very, very different kind of experience. Um, and again, it's a very insulated experience as compared to some of our other locations within, um, within the town. Um, the last one I want to show is just the plaza itself. Uh, this is a picture, a drone photo taken of the space, um, after it was remodeled a few years ago. Here's the ramp coming up. Can you guys see my cursor? Uh, the ramp coming up from, um, from the drop off in the parking garage. Um, here's the space as a whole. This fifty-five thousand square feet is, um, there's quite a bit of space in there between structures. We have, um, significant room, um, and opportunity to try to activate this. And so we're just looking at all possible different ways, um, to help the tenants in this area. Um, and also to support, um, you know, vibrancy as a whole. Um, another thing I'd point out is that this entire structure is heated. Um, and it's a parking garage underneath it. So perforations into the deck can't be made from an additional directory signage perspective. We can't penetrate that deck, um, cover because of the heated surface and because of waterproofing. So the signage opportunities for tenants, um, as a whole are pretty limited within here. No, regardless of how you calculate the frontage, um, to Steve's point, um, we can't get really close at all to utilizing that square footage of sign area because of the way that the structure is designed. And I, you know, I brought up nineteen eighty-four because I think that, you know, we have several older projects that are set up in this way where, you know, at, at a certain point in planning history, we decided that every frontage should be commercial. Um, and it's, you know, a lot harder to activate a lot of that commercial space. So we do have a lot of offices and, and things like that within our, um, within our tenants. But people really do need that wayfinding opportunity to get here and they still need to be able to present themselves. So, you know, the, the ultimate challenge with signage is like, why do we even have signage? And it is to support the tenants and to create wayfinding and to, um, create direction, um, into the space. And so we're really here to support all of those entities, but also to support the effort of making the space better utilized and more vibrant. Um, this is just a photo at that, um, turnaround where you can get into the Peak Nine Inn or you can get into the parking garage. That's that ramp again that goes up to the plaza space. Um, so this is a pretty limited signage opportunity down right at the frontage, which is why we've requested the new, uh, freestanding directory, which I'll point out in a minute. Um, this is helpful for Steve's point too. Um, these are the different tenant identification numbers, um, within each of these structures at the, at the plaza level. Um, so, you know, there are doors on both sides of Gravity House, um, at the Wetterhorn in Tarot. Uh, most people know, um, Sauce on the Maggie here. And then we do have the medical center in this location now. Uh, so these are some of our existing tenants. Uh, we didn't include the lower level in this presentation because, um, that's not a location where we're asking for some of those variances. And so we haven't left it in or put it in here because we don't need to talk about that. Um, from an existing signage inventory, these, um, boxes represent the, um, tenant identity sign. Um, a blade sign, if you will, is what it's, um, sometimes called that's projecting from the building. They look pretty large from a scale perspective on this. They're only eight square foot per side, um, for those. But these are the tenant identification, um, around the building for each of those, um, that's existing as well as any wall identity, campus identity, or freestanding directionals. Um, and then here's the, the few proposed signs that we are, um, asking for. Here's the freestanding directory on South Park Avenue. Um, the gateway entrance monument, um, from, uh, Main Street Station. And then the, uh, projecting tenant identity signs that weren't previously installed, um, for tenants in this location. Here's the calculated signage allowance and, and we've talked a little bit about this, but I, I did want to point out just one thing about this. I'll use the Peak Nine Inn as an example, but, um, this one has a, I'd say relatively normal, um, frontage calculation in terms of on the road and then on our access easement, um, which would at sixty-six percent give us about three hundred thirty-four square feet of sign area. Um, that, that building uses two hundred and eighteen right now with existing. So, um, we have a lot of available sign area, but just not a lot of locations in which to, put signage for some of our tenants. Um, proposed design, this is the sign, um, that was established in twenty-ten. So it was designed previously. Um, and we continue to use this as a standard. Um, each one of these is sixteen point six eight square feet when you count it double sided. Uh, but this, um, this type of signage will continue to be used. This isn't proposed to be changed. So we're kind of trying to keep the vernacular for the Village at Breck that was previously established. Uh, the current directional, um, that's used on the property is, um, is set up in a way like this. This was also approved in twenty-ten. Uh, we're open to changing the design of this in order to better, um, represent tenants. And so I think that that's something, this was previously designed, but again, we have to be really careful about, um, how that's connected to, um, the deck. It can't be, it can't penetrate the surface. And so there's a lot of different ways in which we would have to design that or attach it to a structure, um, in order to, um, continue that kind of wayfinding. We could get really creative, but we have to stay in the box, you know? Um, here's the Park Avenue, uh, wayfinding, uh, directory sign location proposal. Um, we just put in the Main Street Station as an example because it means the eight foot code height and it seems to well represent the tenants. So, um, at this time, we've included that as our example of what we would do in this location. Um, and as Cliff mentioned, we are aware that we would need to come back with a, with a formal design and a class D minor um, to go through. But for this, we really want to establish a location for the sign and that a directory could occur there and would be, um, approved through the plan. Um, apparently I don't have the, the, the archway one. Um, on the archway sign, again, that's not something that we designed. That was, um, established. I think we had a case of bad Photoshop in there, Elaine. And so, um, the, the archway design would be reflective of, of how, you know, the existing Village at Breckenridge sign is, are established. But, you know, we would probably, we wouldn't design it to impede any of our, um, pedestrian flow or to limit accessibility. Um, it could be integrated into the stairs. It's not structurally designed yet. I think that the overarching ask is really that this type of thematic archway element could also be considered between, uh, Main Street Station and, uh, the Village at Breck. On the light posts themselves, um, really because we are limited on how we can create directional, um, and some of the, you know, the most activated times within the plaza are when we have our events. Um, you know, that's really two of the main reasons that we're proposing the light post banners. We have an existing eleven light posts, um, in the, uh, plaza already with, uh, banner arms on them. We have had banners on them in the past. We're proposing to use the same type of treatment that the town uses, um, in the median, um, but would limit what is on those signs, um, to, um, helping with that directory rental shop, parking, um, you know, restaurants, restrooms, that. And then there's a lot of really great creative artwork that comes out of, of the different events that are hosted in the plaza. And so we'd like to be able to utilize those, um, banner arms for those as well. Uh, we had proposed, um, and some additional light post banners, um, those would be located along the ramp. Um, the village is getting ready to embark on some improvements to the ramp itself, which is why we can integrate some potential new lighting and activation on that ramp. And so that's where some of those new posts were proposed to be located. Um, and ultimately the village wants these to look really good as well. And so, you know, keeping them up, making sure that they look good, um, and are, um, really reflecting, you know, what we want them to be doing from a service perspective is, um, really important. Um, on the, on the sandwich boards, um, I wanted, you know, we had in the response, uh, we understand that these have been a challenge in the past in other locations, but we do think that this is a very, very different, um, type of environment, environment within the town. Um, one of the first, um, reasons that sandwich boards were not, um, looked at as appropriate in the past were about narrowness of sidewalks. Um, that's certainly not an issue here. We have a lot of room um, within the plaza. And so we're trying to create additional, um, opportunities for, um, tenants to utilize some of their, um, signage square footage and to help, um, allow for that to happen over this garage that we can't penetrate the surface of. We have one HOA within this area that can control the aesthetics of these. And so from a proliferation perspective, the HOA can, um, control how it looks. Um, that you only have one, where it goes, that you put it away at night and all of that. Um, another, um, issue from, that was previously identified was about snow removal. We have a lot of heated surface here and, and a lot of area, um, that we can activate. And so, um, that the snow removal isn't really an issue in this location. Um, proliferation is, uh, we're not worried about that again because of the, um, the regulations that we've established in terms of who can have one and where outside of all access easements. I would again point out that this location is not visible from, uh, Main Street. It's not visible from South Park Avenue and it's not visible from Peak Nine. Um, this is a completely insulated situation, um, where we're trying to, um, create additional opportunity. Um, and the last thing on sandwich boards, let's see, narrowness, accessibility. Um, because we have a lot of room around this and because we have established access points, this would, these would be located outside of any of those, um, established fire access lanes, pedestrian lanes. And we have, um, plenty of this entire surface is accessible. So should be good there. We look forward to a robust conversation on sandwich boards. Uh, but additional plaza activation, uh, we do have, uh, two food trucks that have been, um, in the plaza in the past, which has been helpful for bringing more people into this plaza space. Um, so the locations for those potential food trucks are located, are located here as one, two, and three. Those are outside of, um, the, the access, um, easement. And then the second thing that the village has done recently is to create some outdoor games. Um, we had a little putt putt course out there, um, for tenants. It was free of charge to use. And we did need, um, a sandwich board for that one to identify where people could go get a golf club and a ball, um, to play the game. Um, those locations that would be permitted for these games are outlined in purple. So, um, we worked with staff to identify where, um, within the plaza space itself, that would be appropriate to have those uses. And it was a lot of fun. People did enjoy it. Um, this is the last slide again, showing the Maggie building in front of, um, the plaza here. And that, you know, it's really, um, it's, it's really, you know, is an interior type space. And so, um, we look forward to hearing, um, the commissioner's questions. Nathan, did I miss anything? Okay, thank you. And Nathan can also answer questions. He knows, he knows everything.
Thank you. You miss your questions? Susan?
Um, nice presentation, Elena. You make a compelling case, uh, if not in part uphill. But could you tell me how, I see the, the banner signs on some of your proposed signs. Can you tell me how many businesses you would propose to have a banner sign for?
There would be no business advertising on the banner signs.
I'm sorry, not the banner.
Oh, the, the sandwich boards?
No, I'm apologies.
Factory?
Yeah. Well, there's one. Go back one more, please. One more. You, your entrance sign had a bunch of banners, the flag signs to the, uh, exterior there white. But regardless, how many businesses are we talking about that you would like to have a, a sign for? Whether it's wayfinding or at the entrance monument or?
Can we answer that one, Nathan? How many do we would like?
Nathan, Nathan, would you mind going up the mic?
Please introduce yourself, Nathan.
Uh, Nathan Nasseri, uh, I'm the executive director for the HOA. Active, uh, businesses, we currently have two, two, hang on, I gotta count there. That, these are businesses that would, that, that have walk-in traffic, not back of the house operations for Vale Resorts. So, uh, one. It's Tarot. Horn. And yeah, nine, I, I'm guessing nine.
Some of these, although they have multiple tenant numbers on them, are combined spaces that are, um, one business.
And then second question, Nathan, thank you, uh, for nine. Um, how many could that conceivably go up to if your occupancy, uh, improves?
Yeah.
I mean, how big is this?
Okay. So the, the, the question is, or the answer is, we have about sixty thousand square feet of, of, of commercial space. Okay. Uh, we have twenty-eight units per se in our declarations. But those units can, you know, as tenants needs vary, right? So a restaurant needs, you know, ten thousand square feet and, or a, uh, a rocket fizz. You know, they only use like four or like two. Ten thousand square feet and or a rocket fizz, you know, they only use like four or like two thousand square feet. Thereabouts, you know, so you know, it varies on the uses. So.
Yeah, and I would point out that. There are seven units on the lower level. And those are all, that's a really tough, that that's a really tough. Kind of retail or restaurant environment on the back of the Maggie. We wish it wasn't. We wish it was rocking. But yeah, there's about nine businesses on the Plaza level itself right now.
So nine currently, who knows how the sixty thousand vacant space is subdivided, but. It could be several times the the current nine.
Yeah.
And would you try and have a ban, a a sign for each of those in the directory?
Well, I think it would reflect how symmetrical and how much, you know, we don't want to have every, you know, if you drive by on Highway nine. If if the sign's too small to have everybody on it, it looks very cluttered, right? And you can't read it. So definitely, we would. Scale it to the appropriate side. And who wants to be on it? We would have, you know, obviously a charge on it, but you know.
Yeah, it will. The Main Street Station example has twelve. And, you know, for this type of scale, I would want a letter height of no less than three of three inches. I feel like at less than three inches on any kind of signage like this, and that's a pedestrian scale letter height at three inches. You know, this sign isn't for vehicular traffic passing by. They won't be able to to read it unless we had, you know. Two signs only at a much larger font. So this one, I think, is a good example. And it, this one sits right out there between Lululemon and Teton, you know, so it's. It's right there at the intersection and people can stop and take a look at it. Some of the, you know, previously conceived. Wayfinding approaches, you know. Whether or not they're that effective, I think depends on. Treat, you know, the contrast between the background and the letter itself and and letter sizing. And also the just the acknowledgement of who the sign is for. The sign is for pedestrian. That's out, you know, walking by and wondering, how do I get to? Sauce on the Maggie from here? Is this in here? You know, it's kind of trying to add some more information.
Okay. And then final question. Does this plan somewhere capture some sort of overall cap? On how many of these businesses you might list or potentially list? Can you give us some assurance that this won't proliferate?
We could establish some policy around that because we want to make sure that it's. For the people who are represented on the sign that it's legible and that it stays. In the right character. We can't fit all of them if every single unit becomes a. Retail or commercial. So we could craft some more language around. How to establish, you know, no more than, we would probably establish it by giving a sign area to this kind of interior. Business identification panel with a. A minimum and a maximum letter height so that you couldn't. You know, it, we still want a little design flexibility, but at the same time, it needs to work.
Okay, thank you.
Also prioritize tenant size too. So, you know, you know, say if a sauce on the Maggie's twelve thousand square feet, I have no idea what their square footage is. But yeah, so, you know, so then it goes down.
And then you didn't have a map anywhere. You know, we use the mall and interior analogy, but every mall I walk into has a map. Is that something you're considering?
If you.
I don't walk into malls very often, though.
We need more people to walk into this mall. This is the least least utilized fifty thousand, fifty five thousand square feet of heated pavement in town, you know, let's get some activation over here. So I think that we have a map, like when you come up from, it was in Cliff, if you pull up our sign plan. Oh, it's right here.
Yes.
Thanks, Pedia. There is a map when you come up the stairs, like right here. Yep, very small. Hold on, let me go to the next one.
There's also a map in the circle too.
And a map in the circle.
But it's to the left.
Yeah, there's a map over here by Gravity House. And then there's a map when you come up these stairs. Right here, this yellow box is an existing map, but it's.
Not proposing anymore maps.
No.
What, there is a map before the before those steps too. So there, it's a right here. No, it's, oops, sorry, it's on this side. It's actually our property line is over here. So there's a map here too.
Okay. No further questions, but thanks, Elena. Thanks, Nathan.
Thanks, Mike.
Steve? You may or may not know this, Nathan. Just this one specifically to you because of one of your comments. But the last meeting, we were looking at signs in general. Around the entire community, not just your area. But there was in fact a sign. What we called a sign in your area that probably violates the sign code. So. I'm wondering how you would feel about the idea that, yes, the HOA can control the signage. But will they?
I was just the the mountain window graphic.
Yeah.
Well, and so when I talked to Cliff about that, it's not against, it's not anti sign code right now because there's no policy around it.
Let's have a robust discussion.
So that one in particular, and yes, you, we, I did read the notes from the last meeting. In particular, some of those are used for screening of back of house areas, which you also see on the back of Main Street a lot. Which looks better, which looks better, you know, this is, that's where, so the subjective nature of this comes in, right? Like, does that look better than boxes stacked against a window?
You don't need to defend that sign, really. The point is, isn't it dangerous to leave the policing of the signage to the HOA? And will the HOA actually police the signage if you're just given a carton to put in the signs?
That's a very good question. I think you can trust HOA to enforce the signs. We did have our our banners on the light post before. We took them down because they were looking ratty. But we don't have anything to enforce the window graphic right now. I don't know which tenant you're talking about, because I can think of all of them. Because we have a Breck Epic Sports has the mountain graphic. We have. The Health Clinic has helicopters on their windows. We have Christie Sports has. Window coverings, and we also have Rocket Fizz on their windows. So. You know, if you give us the. If you give us the guidance to enforce this, you know, we can do it. And we do have, we do enforce covenants currently, like during College Week. People fly their college banners off the balcony. We take those down right away. So. And we also enforce no, we see a charcoal grill on the ban, on the balcony, we take those away right away also. So we do have. Precedent of enforcing our own covenants.
Thank you. That was my only question. Steve, Ellen?
You talked about banners. Have you ever thought about working with the town to? Maybe have your banners match the banners or promote your activities?
Yes, so we we reached out to Breckenridge Tourism Office and we're trying to coordinate that. We have an agreement. Do you put the the BOT banners on the Plaza? But we're waiting to hear, since we are private property, waiting for permission to do so.
I guess just a point of information. A lot of the special events could be approved under a special events permit. And they would be allowed to use banner signs regardless of the decision of this master sign plan.
Alan?
This might be a moot point since, I guess, the, I mean, staff had raised an issue that the banners are a more of a vinyl, the material. There was an issue with the material, but I'm guessing that we use that material, the town uses that material there. Polls.
I do not have the answer, but I would assume yes from distance viewing.
Could there be a more, could the banners be of a more substantial material or would that, or the light poles not designed to handle that wind load?
Yeah, structurally, we've looked into this in the past. You know, could it be perforated metal? Could it be, you know, some other material? And then the wind loads change and the structural engineers try to get involved.
And then in terms of the. I made it to the second and the last, and no one has brought up sandwich boards, but. Where can a tenant put a sandwich board? On the Plaza? Could they put it anywhere? Would they, will you allow them to put it anywhere on the Plaza?
No, it's, there's actually, it has to be so many feet in front of their space, ten, ten feet. Thank you, Elena.
Within ten feet of there.
And they're only allowed one, so.
And it's only for the Plaza level, it's only for the Plaza level tenants. So this is the banners, the polls in which the locations where we have polls that have banner arms on them, just for reference.
And so for a sandwich board, you, each tenant, we get one and it has to be within a ten foot. Ten feet with of their entrance.
Correct. And there's no transference. If somebody want, does it use one, another tenant cannot pick up a second one.
So just, you know, reading some of the letters we receive from your tenants. Would that really help the tenants that have the issues with putting a sandwich board ten feet from their entrance really make a difference?
I I think so. But back to your, can I answer a question on the banners?
Okay.
Follow up. If if we're concerned about weather durability, I, you know, we'd be welcome to, you have to change out your banners, you know. Once a month or something like that. We're open to that. Yeah, so. But yes, to answer your question, I I do believe. You know, the tenants have asked, they've come asked me to. Put this amendment forward. And so here we are.
Okay, thanks. That's all I got.
Thank you for your presentation. I have no questions. So thank you. At this time, we'll open it, questions from public. So if you are online, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press. Star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself. Do we have anybody?
Let me just double check. It might just be Ellie. No one online.
All right, any, anybody in? Please step to the podium.
To the town of Breckenridge and councilors. I am Michael Halubus. I have the food truck Eurostalish since two thousand and eighteen at the village. I know that the town of Breckenridge has laws in place against sandwich boards on Main Street. I get it. They can look messy. I think businesses in the village should be exempt from this rule as we are not on Main Street. We are in the village on private land. Being off Main Street, the sandwich boards. Help a lot in bringing in business. Two thousand and twenty one was a good year in the summer because of the sandwich boards. Two thousand and twenty two, I was down about twenty, twenty five percent due due to the town of Breckenridge enforcing the. Sandwich board rule. People get confused, where is the village? They all think it's Main Street Station, but it's not. Adam from Rocket Fizz and I used to put our sandwich board. At the base of stairs between Main Street Station. Sorry. But Main Street Station and the village and at the top of the ramp. And was successful. So I asked the councilors to think about our view and give us the exemption we need to keep our businesses afloat. Thank you. Any questions? I wasn't aware, I wasn't aware until tonight about having a sandwich board ten feet away from the business, from from the food truck. But I think the main, the main. The main people that come through. For, because a lot of people look at, come up from Main Street Station, walk up, look around, then they go, oh, there's something upstairs. So they walk upstairs. Then they find out that there's another Plaza, the village. So I think it's important that a a sandwich board should be put there. That's where all the business comes from. There's only two accesses from South Park Avenue and Main Street Station. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, we will close that part of the hearing and move on to planning commissioner comments. Alan, would you like to start?
Sure. Like us to answer the questions as well this round?
Yes, please.
There?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Great idea, Elaine.
So. Couple of things. So one is. Vale Resorts does use sandwich boards at the base areas. I don't know if they're allowed or not. I teach at in the village. And they can be hazard. They get blown over, particularly if you step on them in ski boots. It can be a real hazard. And there, there's no like, there's no designated locations where they put them. Also. When I leave the village locker room and walk on the Upper Plaza, you know, with with the food trucks there. And there's cafe tables and chairs there. And you've got. Tourists sprawled all over and skis on shoulders. I find it already is a little tight to navigate. So I'd be concerned about. Even though it would be a handful of sandwich boards, I would be concerned about adding that. And I do appreciate your. Your issues about drawing traffic to you. I think the. What you're, what the HOA is doing and putting up those archways. I agree that. I think the archway is going to help a lot to attract people up those stairs from the village. But, you know, case in point is just what you said, you would want to put your sandwich boards at the base, not within ten feet. And, you know, I I would see the Maggie, Sauce on the Maggie, you know, seeing all the people going down to the restaurants. Down in Main Street Station will want to plant a sandwich board right in front of those stairs, which would be a hazard. So I would just be concerned about the control of sandwich boards. Also, I'd be concerned about what's written and drawn on the sandwich boards. Just having in, you know, in terms of, we are a family resort and, you know, a a young employee decides to get. Add a little innuendo or something to a sandwich board one day. And it's just, it would be tough for you as an HOA to see what's being written on the sandwich boards every day. As for the banners, okay, so I do approve, first question, I do approve the freestanding signage. I do approve the gateway entrance. I think that's going to help a lot. With the drawing traffic from Main Street Station and park up up there. I do not approve the sandwich boards for all the reasons that I've just stated. And I do not agree, I should say. And I actually do think since the town uses banner signs and as long as they're printed and not, you know, just drawn on and they're not flapping in the wind. I think with some standards, I would approve the use of banner signs. That, and I don't think I have, I think with those modifications, we're ready for a final hearing and I have no more comments.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay, well, actually, the the public comment period has ended. Written, we're now on commissioner comments.
This is a preliminary hearing, so you can give feedback to to your HOA for the next hearing. This is a preliminary hearing, so you can give feedback to, to your HOA for the next hearing.
So I, I think I want to say that I think this is a good project, cause I didn't, I never really thought about them being totally separate um entities. Uh, I don't walk through there like Alan does, but um as far as the freestanding signs, definitely like the one that's on the stairways. Definitely don't want it impeding any traffic, though, if you can build it onto the steps. I think space is really critical there. Um, as far as the other one, I don't really know where the crosswalk is and I'm wondering if people will gather in front of it and have concerns about that. So maybe look at having some extra space or look at where it is. Um, but generally, I like the idea of it. Want to see what you come back with for restrictions on the size and the number of businesses advertised on that. See for the I guess I already talked about the, I guess I, I like the gateway arch entrance. I think it's nice. And did you agree with the sandwich boards? Hmm, I have to think about the sandwich boards and walk around there. Want to see what you come back with on that. And then the banner signs. I'm also a little undecided. I want to I think it'd be nice if you could kind of match them more with the town or maybe have the town. I don't know if they want to approve stuff, but definitely like the idea if you're having a festival or some event there to kind of build that up. Do I believe it's ready for final hearing? I don't. I don't know. And I don't have any additional comments. How's that for vague? I'm open minded.
Thank you, Elaine. Steve?
Just a couple of preliminary comments that I think we all have to bear in mind. We're being asked to grant variances to the existing ordinances that apply to the town. And every time we grant a variance, we're setting a precedent, which is a pretty significant precedent in areas like this. So I think we have to be really careful. A couple of comments that have been made. Well, this is private property, so we should be allowed to do something different than anywhere else. Every commercial business in town is in a private building. And they've opened their door to the public and therefore they're subject to the rules of the town. So I can't distinguish the village from any other business in town because that area is owned by somebody else. Somebody else owns all the other buildings too. All right. So specifically looking at the questions. I have no problem with the two additional freestanding signs. I think wayfinding is important and we all see people wandering aimlessly, trying to figure out where they want to go. So the answer to question is one, yes, I support the continuing variance to increase to additional freestanding signs. Question number two. I support the use of a gateway entrance monument variance for the second entrance on the east side. And to Alan's observations, that sounds to me like what uh you want is to mark this area. Your name would be on that entrance sign and you would have some great assistance from that without carrying your sandwich board down there to set it out every day. Uh, so I think that the continuing variant for an arched sign at the second entryway is fine with me. And I'll just point out one sort of reason why variances and precedent come into play. What if uh the people who own the building were the Crown and Marigolds and all that is? Two nice step stairways up, just like this stairway. What if they decide they want an archway sign right there on Main Street? Are we setting a precedent to give them that? So you gotta think about that. Three, I am a hard stop no on sandwich boards. Um, it just isn't fair if we were to give this gentleman his sandwich board. I think we have to give one to any other food truck, food stand that's around the, the town. And if you look at the photographs that were included from Keystone. Keystone is, is a, is a total mess of those signs. I've seen bicycles run into them in the summer, winding through there. They're I, I'm a hard stop no on sandwich boards. Banner signs, I think my answer to this variance request is it should be denied because we can already put those banners in for special events by following the existing special events policy. And then that controls the banners rather than the HOA. And despite Nathan's assurances that the rules will be followed, I would just point out that they're not at the present time. And I don't have that sense of confidence. I've worked on lots of HOAs and we have rules and they aren't always followed. So. And I don't have any other comments. I think I've included them all in this and I, we're ready for a final hearing, but only if you want to have that robust conversation about sandwich boards again at a final hearing.
Thank you, Steve. Mike?
Thank you. Um, so we share your um interest in making that space more viable. It, it is underutilized. Um, I think there is an opportunity for both you and the town and Nathan, we'd like to work with you. Um, unfortunately, all of your solutions that you've brought to us tonight are signs and um, signs have their place, though I agree entirely with Steve's saying that variances are, on signs are really difficult thing uh for us to approve. Having said that, um, speaking to the five questions. Yes, I think the two proposed monument entrance signs are acceptable in concept pending development of design. Regarding to um, the variance for the uh height limitations, yes, I think given the scale of these buildings. Curiously, I was there the other day and there were nine stories, I think. Given that scale, I think your height um proposed is acceptable. I too am a no stop on, or hard stop on no sandwich boards and the town council and the, and the public have been very clear on that. No to a, a variance on banners, but um, as Cliff pointed out, the special events permit seems like the solution for you. I don't think this is quite ready for a final because there's just a lot of no's up here or disagreements with what you're proposing to do. If you truly believe you can incorporate everything and come back to us for a final, I'll let you work with staff on that, but um, I have my doubts. And then just a, a general comment. Um, I wonder if there are non-signage solutions, Nathan, such as uh planters, site furnishings and more amenities such as the putt putt golf that Elena mentioned. I think there's other ways to improve the viability of that large um, open space besides uh signs. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Susan?
Thank you. Um, I agree and support uh on question one, the freestanding sign installations. I think that they will add to um your development and uh, I think that they're, they're needed. I was walking around there this morning and uh, I think they would uh contribute. And I also support the uh eastern gateway entrance monument. Um, I mean, there's really, you have to get to the top of the stairs to see that map. And um so I do think that that too would be helpful. Um, as far as sandwich boards, though, I really question whether we even have the authority to grant a variance uh based on the language that I was citing. Um, and uh, I would not um, agree with granting a variance for that reason. Um, as well as the other concerns about clutter and um obstacles. Um, as far as the banner signs, um, I would note that uh, the proposal includes the um the proposal to add additional light poles. Um, and therefore there would be thirty-four banner signs in this area. And uh, I thought that that was a big number. Um, and would really contribute to visual clutter in that area. And um, I am not supportive because of that. Um, and uh I, you know, I'm open to the idea of applying for a special event permit, you know, if that's something that town wants to grant, you know, that's a different issue. But certainly on an ongoing basis, I think that would be a lot of better signs. So I don't um, agree with approving the variance. I think that uh, Mike makes an interesting point about the final hearing, but to me, if the commission is, is generally not in favor of the sandwich boards and banner signs, I don't see why we can't go to a final hearing. I, I don't really see that there's any, anything to really negotiate here. And I have no additional comments.
Thank you.
May I amend?
Yeah.
Susan makes a really great point about thirty-four banners and I think that's similar to my concern about the proliferation of individual shop signs. We would like to see some sort of cap that's very definitive, that we understand, um, we're comfortable that we don't get too many signs. It's not just design, it's overall numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize the struggles that the village has and the, and, and the underutilization. I've watched that building for forty-one years to hear what is being built. And the changes that's gone through with the town, you know, that used to be the base, the base area. It's not anymore. F lot used to be the parking spot for, for skiing. It's not anymore. So I recognize the, the struggles. That said, um I, I will echo what Steve and, and Mike said about, about uh precedent and, and, and I struggle, would struggle hard with, with making um, making exceptions. I think that sets a precedent that, that, that we can't do. Okay, so uh, with that said, uh, on the questions, um, on number one, I do agree with, with staff um, on the freestep, standing Stein at uh on uh Highway nine. For two, I also agree with staff's interpretation and, and, and recommendation for the gateway sign at the stairs. I would also be a hard no on the sandwich boards. I feel, I feel like this has been a question that's come up time and time again over years and years and discussed and discussed, and it's always been a hard no from the town council, the commission and the public. So I would, I, I would stay with that. It's a hard no for me. Uh, number four. I do not believe that we need to uh have a, a, a variance on the banner signs. I think that the special events um, ver, um, uh, allowance covers you there and, and I, I would not be in support of, of a variance there. I will echo Susan's comment about uh, the final hearing. I think, I think we pretty much stated where we're at on, 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 on three and four. So with that said, if that's where we're at, I think we'd be ready for a final hearing. I don't have any other comments, but thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I think that's it. No? Yep. We will move on to town council report. Mark?
Thanks, Ethan. Okay, uh, town council met last week. Excuse me. Something. In spec, uh, one thing that they, on their legislative items that they discussed was um, the qualifications to be on a board or committee. And they're opening up a number of committees to potentially be um, Upper Blue residents rather than just a town of Breck resident. So um with the exception of the planning commission and the election commission. Which um, I know nothing about. But anyway, um, yeah, those two by charter have to be town residents and they're not changing that, but they are opening up on the others, especially like the uh, diversity and equity and inclusion committee. They really want to cast a wider net in terms of potential um, membership. So makes a lot of sense on a lot of those. Um, but yeah. Um, they're not going to pursue that on planning commission. I decided to let you know that, cause you might hear about it. Some other ways and like, you know, with Alan and the Upper Blue commission, they actually allow town residents in there. So that, this could open it up for some of our other committees to have some Upper Blue residents, um, kind of vice versa. So. Then uh let's see, uh, we, we discussed, uh, Ellie gave a presentation on the historic sheds. Council liked that, um, like us, uh, like, like the planning commission. And um, we're going to continue to pursue that. Council says they'd consider some type of grant program, but they really want to make sure that the property owners have skin in the game as well on it. So it's not going to be like they would fund a full stabilization if someone had a shed that was going to collapse or, you know, imminently ready to collapse. Um, they also agreed with the planning commission um about looking at extending our requirements to stabilize properties beyond just landmark properties to any historic property. Excuse me. So that's a code amendment we'll be working on. And probably bring them back in the next couple of months to council. Um, so let's see, on firewise development code discussion, Cliff, do you wanna? Would you want to just give a quick summary of how that went since you were the lead?
Uh, so we took the work session to town council, um, and we were able to get a few comments from red, white and blue as well. Um, town council member Jay Beckerman kind of, um, you know, uh, copied some of those concerns. Um, some of the aspect was within the zero to five foot of just kind of defining the difference between downtown um, and the outside core. Um, the science that red, white and blue is getting between ground travel and ember burn or something like that. Um, they're just concerned about that. Um, so definitely, we kind of told them this was a, um, you know, a step towards working together, cause this was the kind of preliminary of realigning not only just our distance measurements, but our jargon itself of being able to utilize the same um, kind of distance zones and then the actual identification of those zones um, between property owners for all Summit County residents. Um, so overall, it's very good. Staff is going to work on a few things and then take it for first reading in February.
Thanks, Cliff. And then uh, the last item was, um, we did take the vestibules in the conservation district to the council for a discussion. Um, it was a good discussion. Boy, they pretty much mirrored the commission at the end of the day. Um, they just didn't feel that. They agreed that, you know, y- you couldn't add on to a historic building, obviously a permanent vestibule. And they just didn't feel that the temporary vestibules made sense either on um historic or nonhistoric properties. End of the day, there was a little bit of debate for a minute about nonhistoric, but then majority went with no. So the only thing that they have said is in that situation where you had a nonhistoric building where they wanted to do a said is in that situation where you had a non-historic building where they wanted to do a permanent addition, um, you know, the front to just um, add the vestibule area. They would consider allowing that in terms of some type of free density if necessary. It'd be, be a real tiny amount. So um, anyway, that is something we'll probably work on as a code amendment and bring back, but um, that's about the only part of that that they uh, um, wanted to see pursued. So very much in lockstep with kind of what we heard from you guys. So anyway, and that's uh, the council's meeting. Um, no BGV for the first time in like eight months, no discussion. And no, um, we've got a little period here where we've talked about all the issues. The council's weighed in on everything. Now it's in the hands of the attorneys to put together this package. And so that's what's kind of taken some time. And so we actually won't be discussing that at the next meeting either, but we'll be getting in earnest on that at the February thirteenth meeting.
Any time to bill. The attorneys. I, I knew exactly what I was saying.
That's it.
Thank you.
Saving places?
Yes. Uh, yeah, just two weeks out. So um, if you haven't, then we'd really encourage, once again, um, really valuable, even if you can only make it down for a day, I think it's worthwhile. Um, but we can certainly set you up with a hotel and everything, so.
I was going to bring that up. I've been wanting to go. I am short-handed and incredibly busy.
Yeah.
And I'm going to try to get down for one day, but I just I am slammed with work.
Yeah, so it'll start two weeks from tomorrow.
So that, yeah, that's January thirty-first and then ends on uh, Friday, February second. So those three.
There's a day that I should go down for one day, what would it be? Okay. Any suggestions?
Uh, two, Wednesday tends to be a little warm up. Uh, there's a lot of beef on Thursday. Friday slows down a little.
So Thursday?
Not seeing the agenda or
I'll look at the agenda.
Seeing what's relevant to you and the agenda.
Yeah.
Look at Thursday. Okay. If you come down for like the night before, you know, we all went out for dinner together both nights.
I think I might try that Wednesday night and, and stay with Thursday and then beeline out of there. So, um, okay. Any other issues or questions?
Part of it.
I'm planning to be at least one day.
I'm on the fence for a day. I'm, I'm out of town flying in the evening of the thirty-first, so I don't know if that's, and I have to be here Friday, so I don't know if I can go right to Boulder and
So we'd, we'd like to know, um, as we get closer, um, it'd be, it'd be great if you could just let us know, because we'll make some dinner reservations.
I will commit to Wednesday night, Thursday. That's, I'm stepping out on a limb here, but I'll just do it.
I'll commit to on Wednesday or Thursday.
I won't make any night, zero nights. I'm going to drive down, then I have to go to Aspen. I'm going to drive back down after.
I'll let you know by the end of the week, so with the king packing coming for that one night and one day.
We'll call, we'll call Danny and tell him to show up when you're
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to see a lot of Danny on the upper blue coming up.
Seven oh four, we will adjourn the meeting. Oh, I've always wanted that.